Hurry up. Time to say. Say.
Let's see, Jay will not be here. Yeah, you lost him over there? Okay.
You're doing okay. Good.
See, Christie and Jay won't be here. County man. Okay, are y'all ready?
Yes.
All right, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Texarkana Texas City Council. Today is Monday, January the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We have a really, really large audience with us this evening, and so I want to thank everyone for your attendance and being with us this evening as we kick off a new year, kick off two thousand and twenty-five. At this time, I'll call on our city secretary, Ms. Jennifer Evans, to provide a roll call. Ms. Evans?
Mr. Thompson? Ms. Hart? Ms. Matlock?
Here.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Metter?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Okay, we do have a couple of council members who are missing this evening or absent this evening, so I will be voting on matters that come before the council this evening. And our, we do have special guests with us this evening. We have representatives from PAC sixteen, our local Weeblo scouts, and they are Brett Walker, Trace, Trace Dalby, and Brody Oats. And I'm going to ask them to come forward, and they are going to lead us in our pledge this evening. We also have with the group adult leaders Cub Master Adam Dalby, Assistant Cub Master Nick Walker, and Weeblos Den Leader Lana Johnson. And so this evening, our Weeblos are going to lead us in the pledge, and then Councilmember Hart will provide the invocation after the pledge was given. If everyone will please stand.
Pledgeance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you this afternoon giving you all glory. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to come together and make decisions that will affect our city. Father, we thank you for every day blessings that you provide for us, and we thank you for the invitation of each of us here this afternoon. In Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. I'm going to put some board just down, just a second, guys. Just stay right there. Well, guys, once again, on behalf of the city, we want to thank you very much for being here this evening and providing the pledge for us. And I would like to present to each one of you one of our city lapel pins. This is a pin that is worn by the mayor, it's worn by the city council members, it's worn by the city staff, and it's also presented to citizens in our community for distinguished service. And the work that you do with the Weeblos and the scouting program is certainly well-deserving of distinguished service. And so I would like to present to each one of you a pin and ask that you wear it and wear it proudly. And once again, thank you all for being here this evening. I had an opportunity to speak to this group a couple of weeks ago. They meet over at Saint James School, and so it was on a Sunday afternoon, and we had a nice visit. And so I want to thank you, Ms. Johnson, for the invitation to come and be with you that day. All right? So let me give you your pins and... Very good. All right. Did you get a picture, Sean? Okay. Let me kind of get in the middle here. All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. And just as a form of a housekeeping item, council, if y'all will please have your microphones pinned and turned on so we'll be sure to have an audio of our proceedings this evening as well. At this time, I'd like to present a citizens' life-saving award, and I do have some information that was provided as far as prepared statement. And also, we have our fire chief, Chris Black, with us this evening. We also have some firefighters who are involved in this life-saving endeavor, and we want to certainly recognize them for their efforts as well. So at this time, I will read a prepared statement that was submitted. On Tuesday morning, December the fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, me, my son Lane, my niece Marissa, and her two-year-old daughter Freya were spared our lives. There was a carbon monoxide leak in the heating unit, and I didn't know, did not know it. As we all slept during the night, the house was filling up with gas. Freya started throwing up around 2:00 AM, then Marissa and Lane. We thought it was just a stomach virus. I had a terrible headache and could barely walk or hold my head up. All we wanted to do was sleep. Carrie King, who has been a close friend of mine for twenty years, Marissa had just started working with her at Coleman-Carty Clinic. When Marissa didn't show up for work and wouldn't answer her phone, she called my son and told him to tell her to call. She called in and said we all had the stomach virus. Carrie had an uneasy feeling that there was more than just a virus going on and told her boss she was going to check on us. She came to our house and knocked on the door until I finally got up and opened the door. I couldn't stand up. She got me outside and then opened Marissa's windows because they were so sick she couldn't get them up. Eventually, she was able to get everyone out of the house. She called our other friends, Lynn and Deanna, and they called nine-one-one. The firemen and emergency medical team transported us to the hospital. The firemen measured the carbon monoxide levels in our house, and they were well over the limit of normal. We were told if we had been in the house another fifteen minutes, we would have started dying. Carrie is our guardian angel, and we would not be here if it weren't for her persistency. When we arrived on the, this is notes from Chief Black, our fire chief. When we arrived on the scene and checked the home, we got a reading of five hundred and forty-two ppm, and that stands for part per million of carbon monoxide. This after Ms. King had already opened a window, so it had probably been higher. At five forty-two ppm, carbon CO causes all the symptoms they were having and can be fatal in just two to three hours. Considering how long they may have been in that dangerous level, they are fortunate to have survived. The firefighters involved in this endeavor were firefighters Danny Douglas, Clint Lachowski, Ethan Phillips, Michael Straighton, Scott Robertson, Brad McKinnon, Parker Showalter, and Ethan Carroll. And so at this time, Chief Black is going to, to come forward. Chief, you may have some additional remarks that you may want to share, and we have our, some of our firefighters here this evening who were part of that emergency rescue. So, Chief, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Just always take a chance to do a PSA, so if you have anything in your home that has a flame that gives off carbon monoxide, have a carbon monoxide detector. If you don't have a CO detector, have a Carrie King. That's the best next thing I can tell you to have. I mean, jokingly, but, but all seriousness, fortunately, her gut feeling told her something, you know, and if she didn't have that gut feeling and follow up on, a lot of us might have said, well, if they're sick, they'll be okay. We'll check on them tomorrow, you know. She'd have said that, we might not, it'd be a whole different evening this evening. So just want to thank you and glad that you showed up and did what we did. Our firefighters, of course, showed up, and the level was so high that they actually put on their air packs and breathed their air through our air cylinders just to go in and test it and open everything and air the place out. That's how, that's how critical and how bad it was in that home at that time. So, so check your stuff. See if you have anything in your home that has a flame, you've got carbon monoxide potential in it, so check that for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. All right, if there's anyone in the audience here this evening who is a family member or was a part of this, I'd ask that you please come forward, and we'd like to take a group photo of everyone, so if you would please come forward at this time. Does anybody want to say anything or make any remarks?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, you know, thank you to Carrie. It was nothing but a miracle, short of a miracle, that we are, me and my son, my other niece is not here, and her two-year-old little daughter, but, you know, don't be stupid like me. That's the major reason why I'm doing this, is because I want people to be aware that how important a carbon monoxide detector is. I just thought it was a, you know, piece of plastic that you stuck up on the wall, but, you know, I mean, we, we would have known about this way in advance, and I, my ignorance, I didn't know, but we do have one now. So if you don't have one, make sure that you do.
Anybody else want to share anything? Well, I'd certainly agree with those remarks as far as carbon monoxide detectors are very, very important. If you have gas fireplace logs or gas heating system, you want to be sure that you have one available, and also that it's in working condition. That's, that's very, very important. Okay? Chief, anything else you'd like to share? All right, we have our firefighters. If y'all would please come forward. And I'm just going to pass the, so everyone will know who these firefighters are, I'm just going to pass this down the line if y'all would just recognize yourselves.
I'm Scott Robertson.
Michael Staten.
Brad McKinnon.
Ethan Phillips.
Parker Showalter.
We did have one other captain, Danny Douglas, who was there that night, but he's actually in California right now helping with the wildfires.
I'd like to present you with one of our city lapel pins too, for certainly life-saving, distinguished service, and thank you so much for what you did. I take your interest in that. All right, thank you. Anybody in there? Got it? All right. Thank you all very much. Appreciate you guys. All right, appreciate it. Okay, all right, at this time, we'll go ahead and move along with our meeting this evening. Just want to remind everyone that our next council meeting will be held on Monday, February the tenth. Once again, we're meeting once a month as far as council meetings are concerned rather than our, our two times per month. So once again, Monday, February the tenth, at six PM will be our next council meeting. We have quite a few items pertaining to parks and recreation activities. On February the first, our Parks Master Plan Third Public Meeting will be held, and that will be at six thirty PM at the Texarkana Texas Convention Center. This will be the third public hearing, a public meeting in reference to this very important matter pertaining to our Parks Master Plan, so I encourage our citizens to come out and be a part of that if they haven't otherwise. I've been to a previous meeting, and we certainly welcome and appreciate your input. Before we move along to the pro theater events, I just want to pass along a few quick items. We started this year with some inclement weather last week, and so I want to certainly thank our, our city employees with various departments who worked around the clock in this recovery effort. And also, two of our city employees, Chief Chris Black and Chief Chuck Wertz with the Fire Department, they received recognition in the Texarkana Gazette this past Saturday for their efforts, and I hope I'm not stealing from your notes, David, help with their efforts in helping the Randy Sams Shelter repair their generator to get it back up and running. The, the shelter was at full capacity during the inclement weather, and so I want to thank Chief Black and Chief Wertz for their work with that. This morning, we had the Texarkana College Aviation Mechanical Technology Program ribbon cutting. This was held at their facility at the Texarkana Regional Airport, and this is an outstanding program that's been, it was originally many years ago provided by Southern Arkansas University Tech, ASU Tech. Then the program became dormant, and so TC has picked it back up. We learned this morning that in the future, they're experiencing a significant shortage in the number of airline mechanics, and so this effort being put forth by Texarkana College will provide our community's part in helping to lessen that impact. And so they have a very good group out there, a large number of students who are the initial students in the program, and so we certainly want to wish that program well. Also, we have the, the annual Martin Luther King Holiday coming up, that'll be coming up next Monday on January the twentieth, and we always have some events that are centered around that particular holiday. And so once again, this year, on Saturday, the eighteenth, there will be a prayer breakfast at the Lone Oak Baptist Church, and that will begin at eight AM. And then on Sunday evening will be the Martin Luther King Gala, and that will be held at the Truman Arnold Center, and that will be at seven PM this coming Sunday on the nineteenth. So I encourage our citizens to be a part of these upcoming events for the Martin Luther King Holiday. Also, we have our annual Chamber of Commerce annual celebration that'll be held on January the twenty-fifth, and that will be held at Northridge Country Club. They have a very special keynote speaker this year, it'll be Mr. Truman Arnold, who was the founder of Truman Arnold Companies and has been such a big part of our community as far as helping our community grow and prosper. Of course, he's over the Truman Arnold Companies, he and his son Greg, and so they have a very large presence here in Texarkana and elsewhere, and we're looking forward to having him come to Texarkana from Dallas to be our keynote speaker for the annual chamber celebration. Once again, that'll be held on January the twenty-fifth. Moving along to our pro theater events, the Speak of Love Tour featuring David Phelps. David Phelps is a gospel singer, used to be part of the Gaither Vocal Band, has an incredible voice, and he'll be performing at the Pro on January the twenty-fifth at seven PM. And then The Temptations are coming back this year. They were here last year with Dr. Otis Williams, who's one of the founding members of that group who grew up here in Texarkana, and they'll be in concert along with The Four Tops, and that will be on February the first. That is on a Saturday, and that will be held at eight PM. And then the Masterworks Two Concert, A Flair for the Dramatic, will be hosted by the Texarkana Symphony Orchestra, and that will be held on February the eighth at seven PM. And tickets for the pro theater shows are available at protheater.org. Also, the Texarkana Homeless Coalition. On Thursday, January the twenty-third, TXKHC will conduct its annual point-in-time homeless count required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And on Friday, January the twenty-fourth, the TXKHC will hold its Bridge City Project. It's an annual chili cook-off from five PM to seven PM, excuse me, five PM to seven thirty PM at three nineteen Pine Street, which is behind the loft at Hotel Grim. This year's theme is entitled Construction Zone, and the entry fee for contestants is twenty-five dollars. All funds raised will be used to coordinate homeless services, fund scholarships, and for educational opportunities, and this event is free to the public. At this time, we'll move along to our open forum comments from the public. If there's anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the council, you're welcome to do so. You will have up to five minutes to speak, and if you were here this evening to speak on behalf of one of our public hearing items, then I ask if you'll please wait until we get to that particular public hearing item. We'd more than happy to listen to your comments at that time. And we also ask that you complete a sheet on the form there that's by the door, and so Ms. Evans, do we have any sheets turned in? We did not have any sheets turned in this evening. Is there anyone who would like to address the council? Not seeing anyone coming forward at this time. We move along to appointments to boards and commissions and committees. Do we have any appointments this evening by the council to boards, commissions, and committees?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Mr. Thompson?
I would like to appoint Jim Ragland to the Historic District Commission for the city.
Okay. All right, Mr. Ragland for Historic Commission? Okay. Any other, any others this evening? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Is there a motion for approval? Oh. Oh, on the agenda? Okay. Yes, consideration of appointment to the Bi-State Justice Center and our Governmental Advisory Committee, and this is a mayoral appointment? Okay. For me? Okay, so need to nominate myself? Okay, all right, so I thought we did this last month. We did not?
Mayor, I will nominate, I will nominate, I will nominate Bob Bruggerman.
Okay. Do you know him?
I do. Congratulations.
He seems to be a real, real sharp individual, so... Okay, so thank you, Mr. Thompson. I appreciate that.
Welcome, Mayor.
Okay, as I begin to climb under the dais here. All right, so any others? Okay, all right, so is there a motion for approval? Okay, motion by Councilmember Matlock. Ms. Hart, did you second? Ms. Hart's second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? All right, motion carries. All right. Thank you, Ms. Evans, for keeping me on task here this evening, so I apologize. I thought we had taken care of that last month, so I'm glad we got it done. All right, well, now we move along to our items for consideration. We do have several items this evening on the consent agenda. Item one is to consider approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the city council held on December ninth, two thousand and twenty-four at six PM. Item two, ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero zero nine, amending the budgeted revenues and expenditures for the Public Safety Equipment Fund, Fund One Oh Eight, for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand and twenty-four and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars for cost savings generated from deployment reimbursements. Item number three is resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero zero eight, authorizing the purchase of hydraulic rescue extraction tools from municipal emergency services through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars with budgeted funds from the Public Safety Equipment Fund, Fund One Oh Eight. Item number four, ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one zero, amending budgeted expenditures in the Building Maintenance Fund, Fund Two Twenty Eight, for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-four and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, to add unspent funds of seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ten cents from the preceding fiscal year. Item number five is ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one one, amending budgeted expenditures in the Major Street Maintenance Fund, Fund One Twenty, for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand and twenty-four and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, to add unspent funds of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-two cents from the preceding fiscal year. Item number six, ordinance number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one two, creating the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, EEC BG, Fund, Fund Number Two Forty Eight, and amending budgeted revenues and expenditures in this fund for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-four and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, to add revenues and expenditures of seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Item number seven, resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one four, approving the application for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant, providing a total grant in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars, with the city receiving seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, and Bowie County, Texas, receiving five thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars. Item number eight, resolution number two thousand and twenty-five dash zero one five, authorizing the city manager to purchase a SCADA assessment from Holistic Utility Solutions under the TIPS Contract, two three zero six zero one, with funds budgeted in the Texarkana Water Utilities Technology Fund with a total cost of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars, with the Texas portion being eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. Unless a council member would like to pull one or more of these items for further consideration, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as it has been approved. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Metter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The consent agenda has been approved. Well, now move along to one action item this evening. It's item number nine, resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash one forty, authorizing the city manager to accept an enterprise agreement proposal from SHI Government Solutions of Austin, Texas, for Microsoft licenses for the city of Texarkana, Texas, utilizing Texas State DIR pricing with funds budgeted in City Technology Fund, Fund One Fifteen. And we have Brandon Usleton with us this evening from TWU. So Brandon, IT Department, thank you for being with us this evening, and feel free to provide additional information for us.
No additional information on this particular one, Mayor. It's unchanged from first briefing.
Okay, all right, so any other comments? Any other information from the city staff? No other comments? Okay, very good. Okay. Very good. Is there, unless there are any questions from the council, I will entertain a motion for approval of the resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. We have a second by Councilmember Hart. This pertains to a resolution, so there is not a caption. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. The resolution passes unanimously. Well, now move along to our first briefings. We do have several first briefing items this evening. Item number one is Resolution Number 2025-001, naming the Bringle Lake Park Trail as John and Julie Ray Harrison Trail. And we will have a public hearing and council vote, excuse me, council vote on this item, not a public hearing, at our next meeting on February the 10th. And we have with us Robbie Robertson, who is going to brief the council on this item. Good evening, Robbie.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is in regards, as you said, is the Bringle Lake Park Wilderness Trail. For those of you who are not familiar, this trail starts at Bringle Lake East. It wraps around to the spillway and then starts again and wraps around the Texarkana Golf Ranch, comes out on University. It's approximately seven miles. We had a very long battle to build this trail. I think it's been out there 10 to 10 or 12 years ago, and we've got some folks with Partnership for the Pathway that would like to address this and renaming this to the John and Julie Ray Harrison Trail.
Okay. Very good, Robbie. Thank you. As each speaker comes up to speak, if you will please state your name for the record. All right?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am Joe Saul Sehi with Partnership for the Pathway, but I'm really here as a citizen of Texarkana. I, 15 years ago when I moved here, I knew nothing about trails. I knew nothing about safety and that trails actually lower crime in communities. I didn't know that. I didn't think about beautification of trails. I didn't think about safe routes to schools. I just knew that in front of Texas High, there was no sidewalk. And my kids were freshmen at Texas High at that time, and I thought with crossing guards there and everything that that was a travesty. And I told a good friend of mine, a gentleman named John Cook, and John said, "You should join this group called Partnership for the Pathway," whose goal is all the things that I listed above. Well, like most people in most places, I said, "Well, I don't think I have time for that, but thank you. That's very nice." And so I go about running, and I'm out running on one of our beautiful trails one day, when this beautiful couple right here, John and Julie Ray Harrison, accosted me on the trail. And I say that jokingly because John runs up to me and he says, "You're a runner." And I said, "Yes, I am." And he said, "You should come run our race, which, which supports trails in our community." And I said, "It's funny, because just last week someone was telling me about you and about your mission, and they're so passionate about it that with no profit motive, they were already retired when they started Partnership for the Pathway, I do believe, no profit motive, nothing but helping out our city, this wonderful couple, couple for the past 15 years has been the foremost advocate of making this a beautiful, safe place for us to live." So I was very excited about this. Thank you very much to David Orr, thanks to Robbie. And I'd like to introduce just briefly our president of Partnership for the Pathway, Brandon Ayers.
Yes, as you mentioned, I'm Brandon Ayers. I'm the president of Partnership for the Pathway, and the same guy, John Cook, caught me and asked me about joining the group. So I do have several years helping them put on the Run the Line race, and also several years on the board with Partnership for the Pathway. And to me, the thing I would offer tonight is, just from my experiences, seeing behind the scenes, seeing how much work they put in. And I don't think they can drive through town without looking at, okay, is there, where can we make things better? I just don't think they can do it. That's the type of people they are. And so I'm fully, fully in support of renaming this trail to make sure they, they get the honor, to do them, because they have, they have poured their lives into this community. And again, I've seen a lot of, from the, kind of behind the scenes, all the work they put into it. So it's definitely, definitely well deserved in my mind. So the last person we'll talk is Mike Jones. He'll be able to come up, but a lot of people know Mike Jones, but from Run the Line, he's been kind of like the announcer. He's the voice of that Run the Line for all these years. He's been engaged almost every time, so wanted to give him a chance to talk to.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You know, I think when you reach a status like John and Julie Ray, you just go first name only, and everyone knows who you're talking about in this town. Literally, just say John and Julie Ray. You don't even need the Harrison. But for this honor, I can't think of a better couple to have this renamed. I was brought into this organization from the beginning in 2007, I guess, and there are very difficult people to say no to, and I've not been able to since then. I don't think it's a stretch to say, "No John and Julie Ray, no Texarkana Trail System." It's as simple as that. I've often referred to them as the Texarkana Power Couple, and they truly are. They have put their heart into the trail system, a trail system that I use hopefully three to four days a week, if I'm doing well. And it's just been such a privilege to work with them, and I can think of no better individuals in renaming the Bringle Lake Trail to the John and Julie Ray Harrison Trail. If I may add one out of order comment.
Sure.
I live two down Olive Street, and you referenced the cleanup operations Friday morning. I witnessed them firsthand when I left my home and walked the streets of Olive and Wood. And I just want to compliment the city's workers. What they did that morning was amazing, as I walked through and watched, not only removing limbs and debris from the streets, literally removing it from people's front yards, which I thought was quite amazing, and you should be pleased with their hard work that morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much. See those gentlemen, a round of applause for their comments. Well, I certainly want to echo the comments that were just recently made this evening. John and Julie Ray Harrison had this vision many years ago, and it's, it was a trail system to connect both cities together, both the Texas side and the Arkansas side, whether it involved new construction of asphalt, or whether interlinking existing roadways, or trails, or paths, or something like that. And so they have done an incredible job in when, to provide these trail systems for our citizens, and also when we have families who are looking at relocating or moving to Texarkana, they're, they're looking for quality of life items. And a trail system is a quality of life item, and it's high up on their list when they're looking at coming here. And there are other factors that they're considering as well, but quality of life in regards to a trail system is something that is very, very important to them. And so I've had the honor of, of firing the shotgun, along with the previous mayors, and Mayor Brown currently on the Arkansas side, to get the race officially started, and we haven't injured anyone in doing that, so with the shotguns. And so it's just a great, a great work that this board does, as well as also involving the community. And, and we just want to commend the both of you for your, your time and your efforts and your treasure and your talents in regards to this endeavor. And, and since we have the honorees here this evening, John and Julie Ray, if there's anything that you all would like to add, I would like to open the floor for you to say something.
We'll make this brief. It could be long, but I'm John Harrison, Julie Ray Harrison. We, we started this thing on the idea that all this would be finished in about five or six years. We were surprised that it takes this long to build this much, but we think there's a lot of opportunity in the future. There's so many things that we can do to make this city work a lot better from a transportation standpoint, and trails are a part of that transportation, transportation system. And I'll never forget Brad McCalib, head of the MPO years ago, said, "You know, that interstate is a real problem for trails. You can't connect North Texarkana to South Texarkana." He said, "Let's figure out a way to go underneath on North Park Road." He said, "They're going to be working on that." And he said, "Let me, let me just, let's just ask the contractor if he might make a connection for a trail going underneath there, thereby connecting the, all of North Texarkana. People can ride their bike, not getting on the interstate, go underneath and get into Spring Lake Park, one of the most beautiful parks, I think, in all the south." And, and it's thanks to Robbie and all of his crew that it is that way, and it's kept that way. So there's a lot of opportunity, there's a lot of low-hanging fruit, and a lot more trails to build. So keep that in your focus, and with all the help from the city and the parks, I think it'll be a great future. Julie Ray, you want to say something?
This is something that we felt was really important for Texarkana, both Texarkanas, for the past 18 years. And we've, I remember the first thing we did is we had a party for people who wouldn't want to come and help support the, the idea of what we're doing, the trails. And we raised so much more money than we ever thought we would raise here, but we were able to do that. And you may also know that we put on a half marathon every year, and that's our major fundraiser for every year. And that has been a huge help to us to do that. And we've had, I guess the most we ever had is 800 people come to Texarkana to run in our, our race. That's a lot of people. We've had people from 20 states come and run in our race. So I think it does a lot for the city in addition to what the trails do.
Incidentally, many of you might not know, we use our money that we raise, we have no employees.
No.
We have no paid employees.
No one's paid.
We have some that probably like to be paid, but we don't have any that are paid. So we, we've found that, you know, we can operate pretty inexpensively, and then put all that money back into matching money for grants. So we leverage that money and then can do more with it. And let me just say one other thing, and I want to really thank the city, David Orr, all the council members, that we really appreciate this honor of naming the trail after the two of us.
Thank you.
We don't deserve it. There's a lot, there's a lot, a lot of things that you can do, but that's quite an honor. We want to really thank each and every one of you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very much.
Very good. So.
You do deserve it.
Absolutely. So, well, thank you very much for your, your comments this evening, and I believe February the 16th is the Run the Line race, is that? Okay. All right. So Sunday morning, February the 16th, we'll have another round of, another race here, and so we look forward to, to that event coming up. And, and I also want to thank Robbie once again, when, when these trails are built, you know, once you build something, then you have to maintain it, and you just can't build something and leave it, for the most part. And so Robbie and the Parks and Recreation Department, they do an incredible job of not only maintaining all of our parks, but in addition to that, maintaining our walking trails, making sure that they're in good, safe condition, that there's not any trash, that litter is being picked up, and that sort of thing. And so Robbie, thank you for the work that you and your department, and I think everybody deserves a round of applause for that. And then John and Julie Ray will have this on our agenda at the next council meeting on February the 10th for a vote from the council. Okay? All right. Thank you all for being here. All right. Item number two is Resolution Number 2025-002, authorizing the city manager to accept an enterprise agreement proposal from SHI Government Solutions of Austin, Texas, for Microsoft licenses for the Texarkana Water Utilities, utilizing Texas State DIR pricing with funds budgeted in the TW Technology Fund, totaling $161,526.96 over three years, with the Texas portion totaling $93,346.43 over three years. We have Brandon back with us to brief the council on this item. Welcome back, Brandon.
Mayor, members of council. You're not seeing double. This is an additional Microsoft enterprise agreement. There's a separate one for the water utilities from the city itself, and it just happens to expire 30 days after the one for the city. So this is a renewal for a three-year cycle that we do every year that includes licensing for the water utilities, computers, Microsoft Office, email systems, server systems, and anything that has to do with, with Microsoft, which is everything, pretty much. I believe there was only about a $3,000 cost increase from the previous enterprise agreement for each annual payment, and there is enough money budgeted in the Utilities Technology Fund. Are there any questions?
Questions for Brandon? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
I do have a question.
Councilmember Thompson?
Is only a $3,000 increase reasonable?
It is very reasonable. Because we purchase off of a state contract, the, essentially the state of Texas helps us negotiate with Microsoft, which gives us a much more reasonable cost than, say, a private company. And this, what this enterprise agreement does is it essentially locks us in for three years so that we have three payments instead of one big one. We don't have to be concerned about the, the price increase. When we, the last time we renewed, three years ago, I don't believe there was a price increase at all. If members.
That's amazing.
It is.
Yeah. Everything's just going through the roof.
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brandon. All right. Item number three is ordinance number 2025-003, granting a specific use permit to allow one additional use of tattooing, of tattooing on lots 18, 19, west half of block 20, excuse me, lot 20, block 4, TB Mooers Edition, located at 911 New Boston Road, Hunter McHarver owner. And we have Michelle Daniel to brief us not only on this item, but several upcoming items in reference to our first briefing. So good evening, Michelle, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council. So this is a request for a specific use permit to allow tattooing at 911 New Boston Road, and the property is zoned commercial. The Future Land Use Map has designated this property as neighborhood retail. The adjacent zoning is commercial to the north, south, east, and west, and the adjacent land usage is businesses to the north, south, east, and west. Planning and zoning do recommend for approval of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Michelle on this item? Okay. Thank you. Item number four is ordinance number 2025-004, granting a specific use permit to allow one additional use of tattooing on lots 34 through 36, block 22, RS Bearden Boulevard Edition, located at 2415 Texas Boulevard, Kirk Green owner, Kiana Stevens agent. Michelle?
So good evening again. So this is a request for a specific use permit for tattooing at 2415 Texas Boulevard, and the property is currently zoned commercial. The Future Land Use Map has designated this property as neighborhood retail. The adjacent zoning is commercial to the north, south, and west, and general retail to the east. The adjacent land usage is businesses to the north, south, and east, and vacant land to the west. Planning and zoning do recommend for approval of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Michelle on this item? Okay. Thank you, Michelle. And I'm going to combine items five and six are related, so I'm going to read the, the information on both of those, and then Michelle will brief those two together. Item five is ordinance number 2025-005, rezoning lots 16 through 18, block 8, Red Cut Heights Edition, located at 2501 Neff Street, from single-family 2 to single-family 3, Kimberly Burns owner. Item number six is ordinance number 2025-006, granting a specific use permit to allow the location of a double-wide HUD code manufactured home on lots 16 through 18, block 8, Red Cuts Heights Edition, located at 2501 Neff Street, Kimberly Burns owner. Michelle?
Good evening again. So as you said, this is a request to rezonate 2501 Neff Street from single-family 2 to single-family 3, and for a specific use permit for a HUD code manufactured home. The property is currently vacant land. The Future Land Use Map has designated this property as industrial, and the adjacent zoning is single-family 2 to the west, east, and south, and industrial 1 to the north. The adjacent land use is vacant land to the west, east, and north, and residential to the south. Planning and zoning do recommend approval of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Michelle on this item? Okay. And then council, what I'm going to do, we're going to do item number seven, and then we're going to jump to item number nine, because Michelle will be briefing on both of those items, and then we'll revert back to item number eight, and Paul Merrillich, our airport director, will be briefing us on item eight. So I'll move forward at this time with item number seven. Ordinance number 2025-007, granting a specific use. Ordinance Number 2025-007, granting a specific use permit to allow the location of a single-wide HUD code manufactured home on approximate .87 acre tract of land being tract 35 in the MEP&amp;P Railway Head Company Headright Survey, A-434, located at 1002 Hatton Street, Georgia Trotter owner, Carl Preston agent. Michelle?
So as you said, this is a request for a specific use permit to allow a single-wide HUD code manufactured home at 1002 Hatton Street. This property is on Single Family 3 and is currently a vacant lot. The future land use map has designated this property as industrial. The adjacent zoning is Single Family 2 to the north, south, east, and west. The adjacent land use is vacant land to the north, residential to the south, west, and east. Planning and zoning and staff do recommend approval of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Michelle? Okay. And just as a footnote, council, in reference to these first briefing items, some of these will have public hearings accompanied with them, some of them will not, but the action will be taken on these first briefing items at our next meeting on February the 10th. I'm now going to jump to item number nine, and then we'll go back to item number eight. Item number nine is Ordinance Number 2025-0016, rezoning on Lot 1, Mooers Lane Business Park located at 1521 Mooers Lane from agriculture plan development commercial to single-family 1 plan development commercial. Emmanuel Sanchez owner and Jeffrey Wood, MTG Engineers and Surveyors agent. Michelle?
So again, as you said, this is a request to rezone 1521 Mooers Lane from agriculture commercial to single-family 1 plan development commercial. There is a home located at 1521 Mooers Lane, and that residential use is not changing. The future land use map has designated this property as regional commercial. The adjacent zoning is office to the north, multiple family 1 to the west, commercial to the south and east. The adjacent land use is vacant land to the north, south, and east, and a nursing home to the west. Staff and planning and zoning do recommend for approval of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Michelle? It is a very narrow tract of land, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate your providing us with first briefings on those items this evening. At this time, I'll move back to item number eight, Resolution Number 2025-013. Let me stop right here. Were there any questions on item nine? No questions? Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Let me go back to item eight, Resolution Number 2025-013, authorizing the Texarkana Airport Executive Director to execute an agreement with McClellan Engineering for One Way 422, strengthening design in the amount of $502,203.20 approved in the Texarkana Regional Airport fiscal year 24 capital budget. And once again, we have our airport director, Mr. Paul Merrilick, here to brief the council on this item. Good evening, Paul.
Good evening. So in order to strengthen the runway to allow for wide-body aircraft, we are now ready to do the design portion of that. The funds will be paid primarily out of Arkansas's $16.8 million that they are providing for runway overlay, taxiway, and taxi lane widening. McClellan Engineering has provided a work order of $502,203.20. 90% of that, which is $451.982.88, will be funded by the state of Arkansas. The local match for Texarkana, Texas is $27,716.59. This would be funded from funds previously approved in the fiscal year 2024 capital budget.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for Paul on this item? A lot of activity taking place at the airport these days, so.
All right. We're getting geared up.
Everything going well with the new terminal?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good. Heard lots of positive comments about the new terminal, so.
We were very happy that we did not lose power to the terminal, so it's running really good.
Okay. Well, good. All right. Well, thank you for being here this evening.
I do have a couple of questions.
Mr. Thompson?
Power, do we have generators?
Yes. So the actual, the new terminal has a backup generator to it.
Good.
And then we have a backup generator for the airfield lights.
Okay. So we're not in the dark.
Yeah. The thing that is separate from us is the FAA-controlled air traffic control tower. They do not have a backup generator, and they will not allow them to be connected to ours because they have to keep the federal system separate.
I got it. Yeah.
But yes, they did have zero power, and we invited them over to our fire station to utilize our crow's nest, essentially, because it had power to keep operating.
For the ground control, I would assume.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And so wide-bodied aircraft, it would be a 737 or wider, bigger than that?
Bigger than that.
Good deal.
So we are looking, right now, we're working with a company who's having us design a hangar for a 787, 767, and 2737s.
True wide body.
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Thank you.
That'd be pretty impressive, driving down the interstate and see one of those landing, wouldn't it, or taking off? So, okay. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. At this time, we'll move along to our public hearings portion of the agenda. We do have three public hearings scheduled for this evening. Item number one is Resolution Number 2024-118, approving an amendment to contract for exclusive ambulance service with Life Net Incorporated by revising the schedule of user fees and amending the fiscal year 25 master fee list by adding the Life Net schedule of user fees. At this time, I declare the public hearing open on this item. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council, if you will please come forward and state your name for the record. Not seeing anyone coming forward at this time with the public hearing closed. Is there a motion for approval of the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hart. This item pertains to a resolution, so there is not a caption. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The resolution passes. And we have representatives in the audience from Life Net here this evening. We want to thank you for everything you do each day, serving our citizens on an emergency or perhaps not emergency, most of the time an emergency basis. So we appreciate everything you do, and thank you for being here this evening. Moving on, item number two, Ordinance Number 2024-157, granting a specific use permit to allow one additional use and location for an off-premise digital billboard, excuse me, digital billboard on Lot 2B, Block 5, Walmart Second Edition located at 606 Walton Drive, Mark Dean owner, Chad Ship agent. At this time, I declare the public hearing open on this item. If anyone would like to address the council, which we have one, if you'll please come forward and state your name for the record. Mr. Ship?
Chad Ship. Ship Outdoor just here to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ship? Okay. All right. Thank you much. Appreciate you being here this evening.
Hello.
Okay. Public hearing is still open on this item. If anyone else would like to address the council, please come forward. Okay. At this time, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion for approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Metter. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I think I heard Ms. Matlock. Motion is seconded by Councilmember Matlock. Ms. Evans, the caption, please.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Texarkana, Texas, amending the zoning map showing the location, boundary, and use of certain property, specific use permit number S-799 for one additional use and location of an off-premise digital billboard on Lot 2B, Block 5, Walmart Second Edition located at 606 Walton Drive in the city of Texarkana, Bowie County, Texas, containing a repellent clause, containing a severability clause, and establishing an effective date.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ship. This time, we move along to item number three, Ordinance Number 2024-159, granting a specific use permit to allow the location of a double-wide HUD code manufactured home on Lot 7 through 10, Block 8, Grandview Edition located at 3120 Alexander Avenue, Jimmy Crowell owner, Stoney Matlock agent. At this time, I declare the public hearing open on this item. If anyone would like to address the council, please come forward. At this time, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion for approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Matlock. Ms. Evans, the caption, please.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Texarkana, Texas, amending the zoning map showing the location, boundary, and use of certain property by the granting of specific use permit number S-800 to allow the location of a double-wide HUD code manufactured home on Lot 7 through 10, Block 8, Grandview Edition located at 3120 Alexander Avenue in the city of Texarkana, Bowie County, Texas, containing a repellent clause, containing a severability clause, and establishing an effective date.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ordinance passes. This concludes our public hearings portion of the agenda. We'll now move along to the city manager's report. Dr. Orr?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Mayor, you did some thunder slightly.
Sorry about that.
Just want to echo your comments one more time to thank all our city departments and our personnel for their hard work in not only preparing for but responding for the recent weather, the winter weather. It was truly a team effort, and I say that from almost every department was involved in this effort. We also appreciate our state partners. We had TechDOT, TIDOM, which is Texas Emergency Management, FEMA, and the Texas Military Department that was here as well. They had a mission-ready unit that was staged at the Southwest Center during the storm. And according to the latest update from SWPCO, all power has been fully restored in Texarkana, Texas. At its peak, the winter storm caused over 36,000 outages across SWPCO's three-state service area, with down trees and power lines primarily impacting Texarkana and the surrounding area. So we appreciate the work at SWPCO and their crews as well. We received last week word that we received the Distinguished Budget Award for the 10th year. This award is given by the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, and it reflects the commitment of the governing body and the staff to meet the highest standards and principles in governmental accounting. And so just want to recognize Kristen and her team once again for this great honor, and again, the 10th year in a row that they received it. And finally, just wanted to remind you all that we have a Northeast Texas Regional Alliance that will take place in Austin, Texas on February 19th. And so this is an opportunity for attendees to hear from state agencies and meet with our representatives. We'll be going with a coalition from the Texarkana Chamber of Commerce, but then also cities throughout Northeast Texas, including Mount Pleasant, Silver Springs, and Paris. And so if you're interested in that opportunity, please see me after the meeting. And with that, no further comments.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David. Yes, I want to also comment, echo his comments about our local utility companies and the great work that they did. You know, we were, I know a lot of people were disappointed because we didn't get a lot of snow, but we were a couple of degrees away from having a catastrophe with all the rain, which would have been freezing rain, which would accumulate even further on the trees and power lines. And so it could have been something very similar to the ice storm of 2000 that we had here. Those of you remember that was not a very endearing experience as well. So anyway, I think the good Lord was looking after us when it came to the temperatures outside, and so we didn't receive a lot of icing that we could certainly have received had been a lot worse. So, all right. Thank you, David. Appreciate your comments. All right. Now move along to administrative comments. Any comments from the council this evening to the staff? Everything going okay in your wards? All right. Any final comments from?
I do have something. I don't, being new at this, I'm not quite sure. To the Texas Water Utilities, who do we have here? Did he leave?
We've got Brandon here.
Brandon?
He's in the IT area.
Okay. IT, okay. Never.
He might be able to answer your question.
Okay. I've got a constituent that has got a problem with a water meter that is over five years old, and it's not working properly. Again, I'm sorry if I'm inappropriately asking this right now.
Can address that.
Okay.
So last year, council passed the Automatic Metering Project, AMI, and so that will replace all meters inside the city. So any of those that are over five years old that, and typically too, when it's not working correctly, it's working in the resident's favor, it's not in the city's favor.
It's backwards, okay?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so, but all meters will be replaced as part of this project over the next two years. And I did get an update from Gary Smith, from our executive director, that they plan to start in February with that project.
Okay. So it will be the responsibility of the landowner or the?
For that, for the new meters?
For the new meter.
No, we will be replacing all meters.
Okay. So, okay, I'll get with you later to clarify in my mind so that I can call this.
And if we can get the address for that resident, we can get an updated schedule.
I've got all that, yeah.
Yeah. We can tell him exactly when that will plan to be replaced.
Okay. Sorry if that's out of order here, but.
No, that's fine. You're representing.
Yes, I am.
Concern for all your citizens in your wards.
Yeah.
So that's fine. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right. Thank you, Dr. Orr, for your comments. Any other comments from the council this evening?
Okay. Hearing none. At this time, we will go ahead and ask a motion for adjournment. Before we do that, I want to thank everyone who joined us this evening in the audience. We also want to thank those joining us online for your, not precipitation, but your participation. So anyway, so is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.